Good evening, everyone. All the Public Attorney, regular city council meeting Tuesday, August 11th. For this time, I'd like to invite any of the wish to participate council members and rise for our invitation call around Pledge of Allegiance. I have to, I have to, our freshman council member deliver the invitation.
We have chaplain.
You're our chaplain.
My name is Frank. Father God, we come to you right now just to say thank you for allowing us to be here today. We just want to say thank you for allowing me to take one of us to be in the room. Unhired by this amendment that we have going on. Father, oh yes, watching those who are finally with the flowers at this time. We had to touch those who were coming up with the cure.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. The United Republic of which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here. This time the chair will maintain a motion to approve, excuse me, the wave ring and approve the minutes of July 14th, 2020 on regular city council meeting. During discussion on favor, say if I would say that. Item four on our agenda. We have presentations. The first item is our refinancing summary with Brian here. I'll be calling again. While we do that, let's move forward. Artsville Ranch with NAACP Census 2020.
Yes, oh here.
Yes, sir.
This is good?
That'd be fine.
Okay. For the record, my name is, his is Dylan, Bill Evans, Harpsville, South Carolina. I'm here on the behalf of the, of this man. Artsville Ranch, NAACP, I just want to pass you information and also a call to action. In July, we applied and received a grant from the United Way Association of South Carolina. And so we decided to put on two events, which kind of snowballed into about four events. So the concept was to increase the census rate on harder repopulation in Lamar and Harpsville, South Carolina. So our first two initials to do some drive-through for the census count. And our first, just to give an idea, our first initial was at Butler Center, July 18th. Our second one was, I was the first National Night Out. And our third one was at, that was at Bird Park. Our third initiative, the Gotham Park just passed Sunday. And this weekend, we're planning on to do one at High School Hall in Lamar, South Carolina. So to give you an idea of the process, we were loaned five laptops from South Carolina County 2000. We had a secure wifi. And the process was when a client come in, either they can do it on their own or we could assist them fill out the application. So we're also involved with COVID-19 for the call. The process is very quick, confidential and secure. So there's no security leaks. But before I finish it, I'd like to acknowledge some sponsors and supporters. Definitely United Way of South Carolina, the grant maker, South Carolina County 2020, High School Hall. And the key, you're in Harpsville because it kind of really helped us out getting involved with the first National Night Out and the Butler Heritage Foundation and the Gotham Park. But the ideal is, on the 23rd of July, we sent a memo to the Dalton County Council. And that memo was a memo of encouragement for 2020. The concept behind that was to encourage all our council members to reach out to their constituents and the public and the business, to encourage people to participate in the census count. So I'm here to ask the city, city council, to do the same thing here in Harpsville, to reach out to our residents, to consider participate. So it's like encouraging to do it. Maybe you guys are going some good ideas. NAACP, we have two additional events that we have under consideration, but we got to figure out the logistics. So if you have any questions, we may have, I'll take them.
Thank you for all that you have done with all the organizations that I've talked to. Our work with 2010, and I applied for this round, but council members, uh, love government, we cannot work for this thing.
Right, that's true.
But what we can do is, we can maybe, I'll go through and give you some ideas of how I had to help it work.
Right.
And we really, really got this done. And then I'll go back and do the problems that the other people could not get.
Right.
So get with me and we have, we have some council wants to, and I'll come here and help you as much as I can.
Okay. I appreciate that because I think during our process, we realized, during our first event, we looked at and said, okay, what we, what we need to do to do, to do better. And we found out, we did, I was from the center, but I think the National Night Out was a good move because we sort of went to the people. And I think that's our first initiative where we wanted people to come to us. Gotham Park turned out to be a pretty good deal because we sort of went to the people. Now, I do understand that COVID-19 has impacted on a lot of events throughout the city. And we could tell about that by the numbers. All right, so.
From the census year, they do, they're showing commercials now, but they do have census records going throughout the door.
Right.
Do you know of anyone in Harpsville that got hired?
That had what now?
Got hired.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, yes. Suddenly Gotham Park, I learned that, I talked to one or two people that I know, one for sure, said he's in the process of going through training in September. And I said, okay, good. And I don't know how this, I'm not going to conjecture on what's the process from the federal government end, but it's once they get a train, it's one day a train that they move forward from that. I checked the count yesterday and I think, if I remember correctly, South Carolina was only at 57%, maybe 54, I think, 54%. But compared to 2010, I think the max final count was like 64%. So we got a lot of work to do.
Well, what we can do is encourage some people in Harpsville to work Harpsville. Because if we don't work Harpsville, then they will spend, and people from other places are paying them to do that.
Okay, I'll talk to you later. Okay, that's a good idea. I appreciate that.
Thank you for, for your presentation. Thank you for covering.
All right, appreciate it. All right, thank you.
All right. Brian, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Sure. Go right ahead.
Well, thank you everyone for, for having me come into the call today. I had sent over some information, you don't have what I had sent over earlier today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I numbered all the pages on the bottom right, because we've been doing this over the phone, but I sent over a summary with the title page, says City Parkville, City Council Meeting Packet Result of Installment Purchase Revenue Bonds, Sale Restructuring. And so I wanted to go over really very quickly, because I know you're short on time, six key points from the, from the conclusion of this issuance. One was the goals, two was the process, the official statement. Third was the rating results, bond rating results. Fourth was the bid results. And then fifth would be the cash flow change and RAS would just be some acknowledgement. So first is just kind of recap, during finance committees, I was asked to look at refinancing any loans for the, the idea of having interest cost savings under a traditional model. And obviously there were some small amount of savings, it really wasn't significant. And then giving the hurdles of COVID and what we deemed as unknowables, we put together a second option that looked at restructuring all these loans into a more uniform payment over a 10-year period, where the first two years would provide you budgetary flexibility as you kind of move through and navigate it through the challenges that lie ahead. And so with, with council's permission, we moved forward with the installment purchase revenue bond restructuring. And so page one is the timeline of all the events beginning in, in May and June and then concluding here in August. And there were really kind of four key points that I highlighted in gray. One is the credit rating calls with Standard and Poor's, the agency that rates the utility bonds of the city and also rated these bonds. Next was the competitive sale of the bonds, the results of the sale. And then last is, what just concluded was, you all signed a bunch of documents and the bond issue closed, and then we actually physically paid off or refinanced the identified loan. So that's sort of the layout of the process from beginning to end. And I'm happy to say that we actually did not change the schedule. Very rarely do we start with a schedule and have a hard-nosed closing date here of August 6th and a payoff date of August 6th. And we actually stayed on task. So that's, and add a, and add a way out and go up to all the members of the teams for, for achieving that. Page two is the beginning of the official statement. And official statement is the document that we actually market the bonds from. And it's about, it was about 300 pages, I only included the first two pages. But this is what investors receive when they're looking at whether or not they want to purchase these bonds for investment. And there are kind of two key factors. One, the top left, you'll see the words bank qualified. And that means that banks can purchase these bonds and receive the full federal tax deduction. And off to the right is the S&amp;P rating or S&amp;P Global. And the bonds are rated single A. So those are the two kind of main factors that the first thing as investors would look at when looking at this type of a bond issue. On the second page, page three, at the bottom right, we have the maturity schedule. So we had a 10-year loan in the first year, first June, first 2021. We had interest only for flexibility purposes for this budget cycle. And then thereafter, we scheduled the bond issue to cheap level payments. So there are roughly a little more than $3 million of bonds available to investors. And we put this out for, for competitive sale, you know, made the best, made the best firm win. Now, in preparing the, the bond issue, we went through the ratings process, which really was two calls. We had about a two and a half hour prep session with your chief financial officer, Karen Culver, and, and the rest of the deal team to get prepared to explain the credit. And we received a list of questions from Standard and Poor's. And then after the, the process of the phone call about a week later, they went to committee and they assigned the rating. And what was key about this rating is that whenever they rated these bonds at, we would know what the general obligation bond rating of the city would be. So if you ever issued rated general obligation bond, bond in the public market, you would know what that rating is. And that's actually fairly critical in terms of various statistics and so forth as you move forward. I, I did put the full ratings report in and I made a few highlights. So at the bottom right, if I move to page five, this is the first page of the, the official statement, I'm sorry, the, the ratings report. And so the first highlighted sentence that I pulled, or two sentences says, S&amp;P Global Ratings Assigns a, what we call A Flat, an A rating to Harpsville Public Facility Corporations, $3 million Series 2020 Installment Purchase Rating, Installment Purchase Revenue Bonds. And it ends with the, at the outlook of stable. So we ran all our scenarios continually as an A minus, but we came in at an A flat, a one notch higher, which was, it was a great achievement. The, the second highlighted passage notates that the rating is one notch below Harpsville General Credit Worthiness. To reflect the annual appropriation risk, bond proceeds will be used to consolidate a portion of the city's existing loans and decrease and extend annual debt service payments to improve annual cash flow on a short-term basis and extend the maturity schedule by two years. So this is referencing that because this is a non-appropriation bond issue, the rating is one notch lower than what your general obligation bond would, bonds would be, which means your general obligation bond ratings would be A plus, which is equivalent to the rating on the utility system. And that is, that's a great rating. It is one notch away from double A. And I could not be more pleased with everything that's going on to ask for an initial rating on a credit and to receive an A flat on appropriation debt and an A plus on general obligation debt. So I'm very pleased with the results of, of the rating outcome. Now on page six of the handout at the bottom right, I've, under the, the stable outlook, they didn't take, you know, downside and upside scenarios. And a lot of them to boilerplate, but I thought it would be important at least recognize what they wrote. And on the downside scenario, should the city exhibit an inability to maintain structural balance or depletion of reserves to a nominally low level, we could lower the rating. And then you have the flip side, the upside is material and sustained improvements in the overall wealth levels reserves. Formalized practices and policies in place could lead to an upgrade. So this is where, that's sort of where I left it in terms of any rating movement going forward would be dependent upon the downside and upside scenarios from their viewpoint. And then the last item I wanted to notate on page seven is the part of the credit call that we spent quite a bit of time talking about, which is, city officials intend to adopt a reserve policy within the next year to maintain a 15% to 23% of expenses. In reserve for contingencies, projections indicate that it might take two to three fiscal years for the city to achieve this goal. So one of the major forward-looking themes from the ratings call was that this was being done for lots of purposes. And one of them outside of COVID was, you know, the reserves for contingencies. And the idea that, that there'd be a formal policy in place was something that they felt worthy enough to put in their report, their printed report. So that is, those were really the, the high points that I wanted to talk about from the ratings report. But you can read through it, it goes through a bunch of various statistics and their viewpoints of, of the city and their credit review. If I continue on to page 12, page 12 at the top, it says bond sale results. So we went out for competitive sale, we put it out to the market. And this type of non-appropriation debt and, and bank qualified limits our buyer base, but we wanted to do this competitively as opposed to negotiated. We felt that the negotiated sale would cost a little bit more money in terms of bringing in an additional legal counsel. We felt that we could save money in the competitive market. And I know when you look at two bids, you think, wow, we have five bids. Well, but the market is very small for this type of security. However, within on W Barrett's bid is about 35 firms. There's about 35 to 40 firms that all bid together. And so they came in and, and they bid this, what we would call retail. And Piper Sandler bid the more selling to banks. And we sold a 10-year bond issue with no first maturity at an interest rate of 1.03%. That's much, much lower than all our projections. We were doing cartwheels today at the sale, we couldn't believe to have such a low rate that we received. But when we talked about COVID and all the bad things from COVID, we tried to, to turn the frown upside down, so to speak, and, and find something good from COVID. And, you know, one of the benefits is, is that, you know, money, borrowing money is fairly cheap. So the overall cost of this really, really elevated itself and really made this even more and more worthwhile as we continued to, to work through this process. Now, what's probably most important to everyone is the last page, which is the achievement of what that 1% borrowing rate means. And so we updated our table, we actually included this table in the official statement because we wanted investors to appreciate that this wasn't a restructuring at a distress. This was a restructuring, being progressive, getting ahead of a potential problem that may or may not materialize and provide flexibility. We went into some length in the discussion, the offering document, which you don't typically see, but was unique for this transaction. There are a few highlighted spots. One is the present value factor. In all our discussions, we had been using a 3% present value factor in order to get to a net-net present value breakeven point. And because the interest rate came in so low, I ended up adjusting my methodology and just running it, what is the rate to achieve parity at zero for present value? And it was 2.05%. I think that we can all agree that we achieved much more than 2.5, 2.05% of value. And then most notably, in the first two years, the first two budget cycles, cycles, fiscal year ending '21 and fiscal year ending '22, you can see $702,000 of flexibility and then $561,000. So you add it together, it's about $1.2 million of budgetary flexibility that you now have available to you as you continue to move through, through the unknowables. So that, that wraps up the printed items that I had sent over to kind of to wrap up the, the sentencing for y'all. But I also wanted to, to put out one big acknowledgement, and that was to, to Karen. I've been with almost 20 years now, and we did a lot of prep for the ratings call, but I'll tell you that Karen killed it. She, she just nailed the ratings call. We had, we got off the phone and your bond council called me first and said that just happened. And it was an unbelievable call, the preparation, the preparedness, the ability to articulate where you are, trying to explain a water park scenario. Everything was just extremely fluid and we could not be more pleased with the call. And ultimately, we could not be more pleased with the rating outcome. So I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge Karen and her efforts. It takes a lot of work to go to the public market, but there's also a lot of reward. And I think you see the reward in the rating, the interest rate received and overall cash flow flexibility. So that concludes what I wanted to present tonight. To wrap this up, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Brian, not a question. This is Bobby McGee. I just want to thank you though. You played a key role in this also. Karen did a monumental task, as I said, she did, she's responsible for this happening, but you also helped to put this together. So thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Brian. Hello. Can we go back over to 702 for the 21 year and the past 61 for the 22 year?
What's, what's the question?
Can you just break that down one more time and let me know, because it's red here. And if he's saying we have that much budgetary discretion over what we normally have.
That's right. Because of the lower interest rate?
Yes.
So if that's going to be our cash flow savings in the years that typically would have been in the budget, now we'll have that cash on hand as well.
Good point. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further, Mr. Manager?
No, that, that money will be stringy useful going to that designated fund balance that we're adopting, 15, 20%. That money should go to that savings so that we have it on the, should something happen in the future.
Madam Money Retriever?
Happy to.
So what would be the amount eventually of the reserve fund balance, approximately?
Uh, yeah, well, I was going to say with the finance policy that we're coming up with, we're hoping for that to be done by the end of December. And it's better to do a percentage range, so we're looking for a 17 to 20% range of our general fund budget. So what we have estimated right now is it will take three years to build that, a stock of the happening one year. So the minimum of three years to build up that fund reserve.
Anything further? So thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, y'all have a great evening.
You too. And I speak for everybody when I say to Karen, congratulations on an incredible job. Next, we'll move into item C on the agenda. The board member, Mr. Gerald Wilson is here. Mr. Wilson, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity for you to let me speak. Good evening. I really want to accomplish two things in doing this. One is to give you some information about a fundraiser. And two is to find out if you have any concerns that you think are significant and need to be brought to my attention. My name is Gerald Wilson, and I am a general and ambassador surgeon I practice in, practice in Columbia for the last 40 years. But I'm a born and bred native Harpsvillian. As a matter of fact, I still have pretty strong ties here. My mother, 94 years old, taught English at Butler High School and at Harpsville Junior High School. My late brother-in-law, James Thomas, was the principal of Harpsville Junior High School. And my niece, Meredith Thomas Taylor, was the principal of Harpsville Middle School. So I have still pretty strong ties here. I've been on the board of Butler Heritage Foundation for the past two years. And a sort of brochure that we've just created at your desks about the foundation, I want to speak, one, generally about the foundation, more specifically about the Leadership Institute out of the foundation. The third thing is the fundraiser that we're going to have. So I don't anticipate taking more than, more than five minutes and I'll stop you if you have any questions or whatever. But the Butler Heritage Foundation, as we know, was founded in 1991 by graduates of Butler High School. I'm the class of 68, as is Kennedy. And we've been working to, with a focus of trying to improve the community that's there by being a good neighbor in, in Harpsville. That's the mission that we have, and by providing programs that will benefit the community. Specifically, one of the programs that we brought up now is what's called our Leadership Institute that we're going to get started with. The Leadership Institute, we see is, is essential in us being able to carry forth the foundation's missions and goals, because we're going to select several young teenagers in the area, diverse group of students, who we want to put through this Leadership Institute that we'll have on an annual basis. And the purpose of that is, one, to give them an African-centered leadership education, two, to give them SAT preparation, three, to expose them to careers primarily by graduates of Butler High School but by others, including such things as economics, law, medicine, religion, dealing with issues like health, et cetera. Our director is Angela Jacobs, who is presently at Thornwell Elementary School. She's in charge of the transformation unit. And to start this off, we are going to have a fundraising event, a black tie event, Piana Ricciardo, who, Piana's going to be my wife, who volunteered by me to do this, on September the 12th, Saturday, September the 12th. We're going to make this a COVID-safe environment, COVID-19-safe environment. And we're going to have no more than 25 couples at the auditorium at Butler High School. And the intent is to kick off this by having a fundraiser. We, we need funds in order to be able to do this. And we want to make sure that you are aware of this, and in this environment, this environment that we live in now, I want to make sure if there are any questions you have about the safety of us doing this, please direct them to me right now or later on if you have any other concerns. Our invitation list, we, we Our invitation list, we, we consider it a VIP list and some of you may be on that. But anyone can, can donate to this. And I think it would be very helpful for you to do so because we plan to have, like I said, an African-centered education system. That basically means, uh, think of Nelson Mandela and what he was able to do. And think of the African tradition of San Kova. That is the bird that looks back in order to see what's coming forward. Uh, it's essential that we have students that are educated in what has gone on before. When I was a youth, we had the first black policeman in the city of Hartsville, but he couldn't arrest white people. Look where we've come from that point now. We need to know what has gone on before in order for us to be able to make progress and continue to go forward. So, with that, I'll end on, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
How long is the, um, Leadership Program going to be? A summer-long program?
Yes, the program is set up, it's going to run for ten months. It'll be one Saturday, the second Saturday is one starting in October through June. And then during our Heritage Week celebration, which we usually have around July the fourth, we'll have the graduates of the Leadership Institute come forward and do a presentation for, uh, for the group, for the Heritage Week, uh, attendants. And we plan to do this on a yearly basis. Those that start off initially will come back sort of as mentors for the ones that come up for the next year.
Are you on the poll for this year?
Uh, you have to tell Angela, the director, about that. But, but she's going to set up the criteria for how we select the students. And like I said, we want a diverse group of students because we think that, uh, it may be African-centered, which I think is a very good thing. But it helps all students be able to become, we want these, these students to be leaders in the community. We want them to be able to sit in your position at some point in time.
This is a program for K-12 students or high school students?
Well, we're going to start off the age range of twelve to fifteen years. Um, we probably will be able to expand it depending on what our experience is. But we felt that we need to get students who were sort of in the formative years as they go into high school because that's when you start seeing a lot of cliques and that sort of stuff develop. And we want to have, we want to develop leaders who can go back to their peers and show them the way things ought to be as opposed to where they might be.
How much are you trying to raise to kick off everything?
Well, our, um, our, we have a two-year budget that we proposed, which is forty-three thousand dollars. So, we need some money. I plan to contribute a thousand dollars this first year myself. And so I would challenge any of you who are willing to, to meet that challenge.
Um, Angela Jacobs is going to be the director. What are the teachers that will be teaching these classes?
Uh, she's the director and she will be in charge of the SAT preparation program. Part of the, the programs, the students will be able to sit down. We expect them to do research. Another part of African-centered education is that you can't speak unless you can back up what you say. And so she'll be responsible for running those sessions. And then the, in the afternoon sessions, we'll have career, like myself, I may come and talk about health and medicine. We'll get someone to come talk about law, someone to come talk about. We even talked about, we have a segment on religion. And there was some controversy, Mike, who's going to, who's promoting what religion? We're not talking about religion from that aspect. We're talking about the ability to deal with religion in society. So, we're not talking about proposing or pushing any specific religion.
I'm telling you that's the thing, in effect, with the Maureen.
What's that?
She's saying you left your sister Maureen out.
Oh, yeah.
If you destroyed it, Maureen, that is just all, all you had to say right there.
She's a secret. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for coming. It sounds like a wonderful program. We can't wait to help.
Thank you.
Okay, um, item D on our agenda. Water issues on Lanier, Kenwood Downtown. Mr. Ricky Fink is here.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm a Hartsvilleian and I was also a graduate in nineteen sixty-eight. The, um, the water problem in Hartsville, uh, has developed over the years. And I don't know all the facts on the downtown flooding, but when I was growing up, it was unheard of that the city flooded. And, uh, I bought property down on Lanier, which is South District, in nineteen eighty-five. And I built two houses, one in eighty-six and one in eighty-seven. And I went to, um, Lanier, uh, was also part of the Kenwood Drive subdivision that was, uh, started around nineteen forty-nine. And first house probably fifty-oneish. And I went to a couple of folks in nineteen eighty-four that were old then and, um, were down there on the initial, um, homes. And they never had any flooding. And, uh, when Dixie Construction, uh, was clearing some trees off the two lots, uh, the older fellow had been working with him for years and years and said that he was unaware of any flooding and, and my houses were on the swell. And, uh, because of wetness one, and, um, he said they were fine. Uh, we'd never have a problem. Well, up came the, um, around nineteen ninety-five, the, uh, railroad used to go across Presswood Lake. Well, in ninety-five, it was actually found the property, the railroad property adjacent to Presswood Lake. And they incorporated it into another lot from McDonald's and they built a home there. And in the process, they closed up the two ditches that were on both sides, equal sized as railroad tracks. And those ditches are down, if you go down to Sonoco, where you used to plot in and still probably do, they still have, I think the ditch is down there now. And these ditches, uh, took the overflow from Hartsville when it ran down the hill. So, nobody living was, uh, privy to the fact that well, under floods, they never had any flooding because the water just simply ran into the lake. Now, I don't know if that's one hundred percent, but, uh, from a common sense approach, it sounds like it makes good sense to me. But, but what happened in the mid-nineties also, Fifth Street was enlarged. And I was absolutely, met with the local engineer out of Darlington for the DOT, uh, about five or six days ago. He was down looking for the highway park, maybe because of the city or the engineers are doing work, asking to come to look. And, uh, I challenged him to tell me what did the state do? And the engineer, the, uh, redoing North District, what was the deal with the water runoff? And I was absolutely, in my opinion, informed by what he said, there was no consideration. The water simply feeds to the big ditch. It runs down the big ditch east. It crosses there, engineering building to Sonoco, and then it runs under Sonoco. And so, the, you know, the general consensus of all the old people that there used to be a ditch down there and it just water ran and ran into the, uh, maybe Black Creek or maybe it ran on the other side of Sonoco and the Presswood Lake. Nobody knows because it happened so long ago. There's probably nobody living when that all took place. But I do know that, um, that I hear that Sonoco has lost their insurance policy, uh, which floods the, uh, machinery down at the paper mill. And I have noticed, and I talked with Mr. Andy a while ago, and he's been in it ten years. And in the last three or four months, um, the big rains, including the one where we had seven inches or six inches or even eight inches, depending on who you ask, the, uh, the rain stopped that night by three o'clock. And the next day at ten o'clock, the ditch was still full. Now, uh, but about, a few days before that, uh, this has been about six weeks ago, we had a rain one, three o'clock, one afternoon. And, um, the, um, the rain came about thirty minutes. And I went down, it flooded, it flooded Fifth Street, it flooded uptown, it flooded Sonoco Road. And I'm down there looking, standing on the grate that crosses Sonoco Road and then it runs from the grate. You can see the water in this, uh, eight-foot deal. The water is not flowing, not flowing clearly. Now, this is after the rain, this is at like five o'clock. The rain stopped at three-thirty. And the ditch is not empty enough. Very, very, um, not normal, not normal. Something's happening with the flow of water to keep that ditch closed. We've had all these storms, the hurricanes since two thousand and fifteen, and there was not any problem until the last one, which was floods. Uh, but the water normally just runs and runs off and the ditch doesn't fill up. It'll get high, but it doesn't run over. So, I talked with the engineers that are in town from Columbia. And about two months ago, they had been here about a day or so. And, uh, I asked them to go over and look at the end of Ninth Street. I don't know if any of you guys have ever seen, it's a Hartsville canyon, the Grand Canyon. But it is unbelievable. Uh, they got pictures at the library in nineteen, in eighteen fifty, where there was a bridge across Home Avenue and the water is up to the bridge. So, that thing since eighteen fifty is washed out like it is. Now, Ninth Street runs into that area. But when you go down on the lake, that's just a small little ditch that's supposed to carry that water, which is not carrying much. And the water that comes down, uh, Fifth Street, that culvert's on the road, probably a hundred pounds a piece and made us like little bridges floating around. And my contention is that if we had a way for the water to get off down Fifth Street immediately where it runs into the lake, uh, I can't, I cannot get any traction from anyone. Um, that maybe the downtown area would not flood because if the pipes were empty, they could carry more water if the water would run up. But, uh...
So, you're suggesting instead of it dumping into the Lanier ditch, that it could continue to run down where the bridge is and dump straight into the lake possibly?
Well, uh, when, keep in mind now, when the railroad tracks were, it had two ditches. And evidently, those two ditches took care of overflow, like an emergency spillway, yeah? And nobody got lucky. Nobody got lucky that I could find living. And, uh, and I, and I checked it out for a proper. And, uh, but I can tell you, um, in the last, um, I'm not talking about the storms, the major storms coming through. Uh, in fact, down on Lanier, uh, when floods came through a year and a half ago, a little more, uh, it took almost two years now, the, um, Lanier area was not flooding, uh, except on Sunday morning. But, uh, and then it ran down. And the Tuesday about one o'clock, I was worried about it flooding because the water started running over along the park area, over the shoreline, and it started coming toward Fifth Street, but it didn't ever press Fifth Street before they shut the gates down at five o'clock in the morning with the core engineers. And so the water, the flow stopped, uh, significantly. And I really thought that the dam at Sonoco was getting ready to go away. Uh, but, uh, so the, the problem down on Lanier is a man-made problem. I'm convinced, one hundred percent. But I'm not here just because of Lanier. I think if the water could run out into the lake like it used to with the, with the ditches on the railroad, that the downtown wouldn't flood like it would.
So, um, just for a point of clarity, um, you're saying to divert them left and right at Fifth? I guess I was suggesting that, I'm curious why it doesn't run all the way down Fifth into either side of the, the bridge and dump all?
Well, if you go down the hill, if you're going down the hill and you get there, um, there at the hotel on the left, uh, it actually starts rising back up.
Right. I'm suggesting to put a culvert in and drag it down.
Oh, it's, um, I think it would be very beneficial. And I can't get anybody to tell me what elevation is of the lake on a normal level.
Yeah.
And, and the ditch, uh, or the catch basin there at Lanier, some ditch mark. So, what is the difference down in that mark? But still, I don't remember, uh, when the ditch was there, that the ditch had water, you know, on a regular basis.
So, I, I don't need to speak out of turn. Uh, the city manager can address this as well. The information we were given is we are looking at an engineering study that is supposed to give us some insight into those questions you've just posed. What are the options? What are the costs? But you've also alluded to the second part of the equation, which is we've noticed the water, uh, seems to stop when it disappears under the Sonoco property. And we don't know where that goes. We don't know the size of those pipes. And I think that from my understanding, they're also doing a million-dollar engineer study to determine what those answers are or remedy on both sides of that equation.
Well, the engineers, you're speaking about in Columbia? Is that the ones?
No, I think those are DOT engineers. Uh, these are not DOT engineers.
Oh, no, no, no. The ones I'm speaking about are, um, they are in here because of the FEMA grant, uh, or whatever.
Yeah.
Is that the ones you're speaking about?
Yeah.
Well, I spoke with two gentlemen down, down there on the corner of Lanier and Fifth Street. And, uh, explained to them the situation. And they said, "Well, uh, I hear what you're saying, but our study has nothing to do with this." Absolutely nothing to do with it.
Right.
And honestly, um, my problem is, being a builder, I see it happening all over town. And I'm here officially to put it on record that if we allow anybody to build a building in the city of Hartsville, then there should be an intentioned, uh, area. No matter what size the building is or what size the lake is. But, uh, since nineteen eighty-five...
You're talking about for commercial and residential?
Well, maybe even residential. Because, uh, you know, uh, the parking lots can be used for this area. We only talk about diverting water for twenty to thirty minutes. Uh, what can keep it from running into the street? Literally, uh, it doesn't take much. But, uh, every little bit helps. And, uh, you know, when we did the project, um, down on Carol and Haddon across the railroad tracks, I don't know how much money was spent down there, but that was money that spent too. Because it does absolutely nothing.
I've seen it full one time.
Well, uh, and it's ten years old or more. And we've had two or three thousand-year floods.
Yep.
And I know all that.
Yeah, I've only seen it full one time. Um, I do, I will tell you the part that I, I think that, um, I wanted to point out is, uh, my family obviously has had a business in downtown since nineteen fifteen. And, um, it's flooded since the thirties downtown. I've got pictures of it, of it flooding.
But, but not on a regular basis like it is now.
Uh, pretty regular. To the point that, uh, my father tells me that they had channels put in the door and felt boards that every time it rained, they would jam the felt boards in because it would obviously rise just like it does now. But that doesn't explain the, the phenomenon which you're alluding to, which is why are we having all these troubles that have never existed down the hill? I mean, I, I, that does concern all of us. And, and I don't know that it's, it's obviously going to be a multitude of, of answers I think we're going to find. And part of it is, like you alluded to, uh, we just built four lanes of asphalt to carry water like a rocket ship down the hill with nowhere to go. And possibly, we've even covered over, or DOT or whoever is in charge of those things, have covered over some of the outlets which had traditionally been used, um, to, to flow that water. I, I think that, you know, I'm experiencing this personally, you know, at my house for the last twenty years now. And, um, I can't figure out what's changed either, that that water comes down the hill, runs through those ditches. I mean, I'm at the bottom by the lake and, and my culverts are full. I mean, completely full, the streets are flooded. My backyard has two feet of water in it and it's trickling out of the pipe. And the pipe's been blown out and cleared. It's like the whole system is just becoming out of grain because it's all two hundred years old. Uh, and I'm not an engineer. I'm just looking at it like my neighbor Gus looks at it and saying, "That doesn't make sense." You know, what's changed? What is, what's going on? So in the essence of fairness, because there are a bunch of people here to speak, um, I, I didn't know if the manager or Russ, if y'all want to address some of those points or clarify some positions?
Russ, let's just speak about the drainage study itself.
So the drainage study, uh, is really with a commission to do, um, the circle ditch, the ditch line to the circle and Knight Street ditch, as you discussed earlier. When they got here, we did ask them to look at those areas because my fear was that all the, all the water's going faster down the hill, what's it going to do when it hits Lanier? It's one of the things that we identified as a problem area. They were supposed to look at that area, haven't got the information back, the study's not been completed yet, but I'm still waiting on that. Now, having said what you said about the ditches, um, we can definitely look into that. We have the camera system to go ahead and send about the stormwater systems along the Fifth Street to see if they do connect to the lake, because they are stormwater systems in and around Fifth that head that way. So we can definitely look at that and see if your theory is correct and see if it is stopped though.
So just for the benefits, we do have residents from here. Can you, can you give every, so everybody has the same information, um, the latest update with DOT, who owns the ditch, what's going to happen to the ditch, you know, what's hap, what, what's happened since our last neighborhood meeting?
So, so DOT finally accepted the fact they own the Kenwood stormwater system. So they, they wrote it up, said, "Yes, we own it." So that is, that is for sure. Uh, they did not, however, say that they own the Lanier Ditch. So it's just, uh, we're both cooperating, they're, DOT's going to come in, they're going to clear the vegetation out and clear some sand out, the city's going to hollow it, so they're going to work to walk and come up to get that cleared out at least a little bit to get the water moving, to try to get it from, from just standing still all day. So that's...
And where that, where that ditch, um, meets that culvert that goes through its plant?
So, so that is on the, basically there's, uh, a lot of people talk about this flap area on the, on the culvert. That is to, to limit the water going through Sunoco into their wastewater treatment plant. If that starts overflowing, then they start getting the dehack out violations. So that's the reason why that is there. There, the, we did get plans from them, said there's anywhere from a thirty-five inch pipe to a forty-four inch pipe running through Sunoco, basically heading out toward Black Creek past the dam. So that's where that water goes. We did ask them to go in and clear out some debris, there was some trees. We found we were down there last time meeting with, with, with the residents, and they did remove some of that and clear it out a little bit.
So what if, just for, because I'm not an engineer, uh, would a forty-fourth inch pipe hold the volume of that water feeding into?
Not, not would. Not would the range we've been mitigating in the volume of water in Lanier.
Well, so then if you're going to clean out that ditch or make it, give it more volume, is that...
It may make some...
That's just holding the water temporarily while it's like...
Like another choke cord if it goes under that forty-four inch pipe.
Right, so it's, it's almost like when they finished their study, we need to know if we can hook a left and go straight to the right.
So, so Sunoco's plan is to divert the water around Sunoco.
It's a long way around.
A long way around, but not to go through the plant. Uh, that is something that when they do start beginning that project, I feel like it's just a preliminary study there is now, we need to be part of that so that we can, collaborate and work in a way to make a lot of effort for everyone.
So go back to Mr. Fink's point. Um, somebody owns the rail bed. And it's abandoned.
Yes.
And obviously the neighbors have covered over the ditch, or don't want a ditch, you know, okay. Um, but if we're not in ditches, I don't think ditches are a great long-term solution because they just get pulled and you cut open and it's the same issues recycled until somebody calls, right? Is there not a way to use the rail bed and install a culvert system that just shoots straight off like the old one used to do?
The house was on top of it.
Huh?
The home was built on top of it.
Ricky does the, um, I thought it's to the right of...
It was actually built, their house on top of it. Closed everything and that little rise that's right there, sitting there.
So it's not, it's not done around the side of the porch?
Well, I think a ten or eleven feet, so I don't know, twenty-three possibly to the, to the property line.
Yeah.
But, um, I don't think it was completely, um, abandoned.
Would, um, that's, now they have thought that we allowed that, yeah. Would we have known it, like, how, I mean, we can't get the rail bed now across the lake, like, we wonder how they decided to sell it. And would the old flat show the, the, the ditch that we've covered over?
Railroad, um, the railroad, um, the ditches, um, I hadn't been to the Sunoco in a long time to look, but they got railroad, they cut it to the senior building across there, and, uh, the ditches were on both sides. And they, and of course the railroad maintained them, or Sunoco, somebody maintained, uh, you know, before it took railroad out. And, uh, they did a job, uh, because it was, uh, but now, uh, with Lanier is actually higher, uh, and the water, uh, is like a diet. And, uh, the, uh, but, but I think if, if the water could run off down Fifth Street, especially when it starts pressing over the street, that it would be, uh, helpful for the downtown area.
Yeah.
At the same time where the pipe would be so full and carry more water.
It'd be helpful probably a lot. Um, just like you said, where the, the, uh, the sinkhole was, where the caves, you know, same phenomenon happening there.
Mayor, I'd just like to acknowledge the people who are here from Kenwood tonight and, and Mr. Fink, Ricky and I talk often, we've talked with all the neighbors, manager, you, we've all been down there. I've lived there twenty years, it's been flooded just a few weeks ago, just like everybody else has on that. So it is a source of contention, something definitely has changed. Um, you know, we need to just keep digging until we literally find out what is holding. You're talking about the flow that's not going on under that pipe at Sunoco. And just imagine, I think we just sit, maybe that's a meeting, we can all get together and just go over there, have a nice conversation, just ask them to, to look at it. If one little thing started to give us some relief, we've got a lot to work on, but we got to get started.
Well, the shortest route is going to be the least expensive solution.
Yeah.
I mean, because if you have to go all the way around Black Creek and lay sixty-inch pipe, um, just go down the lake.
Get that water in the lake and not in the back of the house.
So we do have other people here that may want to speak.
Well, the other situation, you know, is when it rains, you know, like, and you know, you're sorry, if it runs three inches and thirty minutes, what you can't do anything about it.
Right.
But the problem is, uh, the water that, if Snake Branch runs down towards Sunoco and runs down, and whatever the hypothetical bet is, um, the, the water that runs from the ditch down to Indian River, down to Sunoco, the water on Snake Branch is running so rapidly and so fierce that it actually locks down the water. You can see the water down Lanier, you can put a tape down, you can watch it rise, it's like you've got, like, tape to your back to it.
Yeah.
And, and you can go to the, the tape place on there in Indian River, and the water's actually running the wrong way. And, uh, so when we clean out Knight Street or Richardson Circle, I think that that's only going to make the problem downtown even worse. Because the water's down the way it does. And if we flood downtown and that water's going that way, it's just going to be that much more water downtown. And just like it's going to be that much more down on, on Lanier until we get it out the shortest. And I say, um, take a ditch, dig up, and I got some property down there, I've got a lot of water if necessary.
Well, one of the ideas we've been talking about in certain places, um, is, you know, installing these bio swells or temporary, you know, detention ponds. Uh, I'm not a, I'm not a huge fan of detention ponds, uh, in any case, just because they're a complete waste of, of land mass. And, you know, we live in a world where we require a number of parking spaces to be paid for every square foot of building, and if we didn't think that way, we wouldn't have all this asphalt to run off water, too. We wouldn't need detention ponds, we'd have a lot more permeable substances. So that's one change we could make. But the other that we talked about when we were down in the neighborhood was, you know, could we take some forested areas or some areas to make them temporary containment units so that we could return that water into the system and it didn't overload it? If all that water goes into that ditch, I mean, it's just a waiting game. And, and to your point, maybe it's a hydrology game where, you know, until the water drops. I remember going with, uh, with Russ down below Snake Branch in the last, you know, issue we had where the, uh, where the plant flooded, and the outlet pipe was four feet underwater. And I'm not smart enough to know, like, you know, does water still flow through that pipe even though the pressure from the entire lake is pushing it, you know, pushing it back? But those are real serious problems that, you know, that I don't know that we have answers to, though. So, uh, I think that we've got some, some good points that we're going to be working with.
Keep in mind now for, for the, uh, baby ordinance for the city or whatever, and I did it in nineteen ninety-five in Lamar, um, for Dr. Rick's office. The, uh, we put an area in the parking lot where the water runs into the parking lot, and the cars are here, here, and it goes down and the water hasn't, they've run out of ten inch pipe.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it, it, and it floods the parking lot.
Right.
But the way the cars are, the cars don't get flooded.
Right.
And so it holds that water a lot of, for like ten to twenty to thirty minutes, and keeps the, you know, it just, every little bit helps.
Sure, you know, I think it's, I think the problem is very consecutive effects.
When you, um, taking, uh, not you said parking lot, when you set it in that drop space, when you attach it to something else, it keeps holding the water so that it won't flood the cars?
Oh, well, what happens, the, uh, the curb is there and the wheels are hiding in the curb, so the water would actually run over the curb before it ran into the car.
Right.
And the theory behind that, that system is, let's just say we've got this room that's going to be a parking lot, and you've got a drain line in the middle, which is down, and cars are parked here and there. Well, you put a pipe in, whatever, whatever it is, over there, it was a ten inch pipe, where the water runs out of ten inch pipe. And until, when it gets down, the ten inch pipe restricts the amount of water that runs out of the little, the kitchen. But here it might be with a six inch pipe.
Right.
So it holds water for like thirty minutes before it exits. So for example, uh, right here in town, um, the site, when I was working on the N R club, they were, they were over there building the deep ground, and it's almost two acres, and most of all their water runs into the street, which is, is the flat.
So it's, it's sad as well that, you know, the WHSC radio station, Mr. Fink, there was a, a big, and it's still there, canal bit there. And, well, it's through the door, it flooded someone's house until it knocked the tower out of the house. And CPML could not calm and do the power until the water escaped. So something dropped it off, it, across those two streets into that ditch by the WHSC radio station. I heard it jet back, got all the water out, then it rained again. The water was still there, and so we went, I kept going, kept going, kept going, and found out it had never been hot. So like you said, changes happen, but if you keep digging and keep looking, you will find an answer. And we are working together, I think we'll be able to do that.
Okay, Mr. Fink, um, thank you for coming back. I know you intended to come last, but we appreciate you taking the time to come. Um, I, I don't have the side of chief, but I know, um, do any of y'all want to add to that?
Um, well, my name is Pam Riggs, I live on Kenwood. I mean, what Mr. Fink said is very true from our point of view, um, once the ditch behind Kenwood fills up, and it can fill up, I mean, honestly, it starts overflowing at four inches. You can get three, four inches and the ditch will start overflowing. It's in the street, it's in our yards, um, you have to decide if you're going to move your vehicles, because it will get in your vehicles. A rain like we had with the six and seven inches just the other week, I mean, you have to decide sometimes if you're going to use sandbags. So that's not a decision you should have to think about on a regular basis. You shouldn't have to think those types of things. I know the last one we had, I had to decide if I was going to, um, move my car because I didn't move it before the storm started, because it started at eleven o'clock, and I, I decided I would just leave the neighborhood. And actually, I was talking to Andy, one, one-thirty in the morning, I was talking to Andy. So we call each other all the time for the night when the storm, it's a very scary thing when it rains. Um, but I ended up spending from one-thirty to four-thirty in First Baptist parking lot because you couldn't leave town. Town was flooded where Mr. Fink's talking about, you couldn't cross the field. Um, you couldn't get forth because it floods. I went up towards Carolina, I was going to go out that way, it was flooded. So, you know, it's interesting to hear what you say, but the, the ditch behind Kenwood definitely needs some relief at some point. It is, it is something that's very worrisome.
I know that, um, I know DOT finally came out and they redid the, um, the curb.
They did it Caroline's house.
Is that, did you, was that before that last round?
No, it was just finished this last week.
Does it look, I mean, does it look like it's going to do anything?
Well, that's what my husband and I were talking about, the space that they did the curb is only about three feet.
Okay.
Maybe four feet long that they did.
Yeah.
So the curb runs like this, and then it's like a mountain that kind of crests up here.
Okay.
Um, and where they elevated the curb, it is where you could see in the grass where the water runs down, um, the hills, um, to my yard. So I think it will prevent there, but what, what's going to prevent it from going on the other side of the curb? Because it, it's literally just a hump. So I, my fear is that now the water's just going to find another angle to come.
Well, it's, it's going to go down to the, to the culvert, and then we've got the second part of the issue, which is the culvert, if it doesn't release, then, uh, you know, it's, it runs into the ditch where there's a problem to be dealt with. So, yeah, I don't, I think we're just going to have to, you know, look at that. Uh, I don't know, I, I don't mean to write checks we can't cash, but, um, I wonder if the fire department can go turn on fire items, let's see what happens to, you know, a hundred gallons of, you know, sand coming down the street. Maybe we could head it off before we get to that mix.
We did TV the lines from the system to the ditch, and those are clear. And it's the system, once it gets to the private property, we need to still TV to see what's going on.
Once it gets to, oh, just Sunoco? Yeah, 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 I mean, yeah. So we've got it, let's go ahead and, um, set that, ask Sunoco for that meeting, and, um, I think we've got far enough examples, um, pictures and data to, uh, to talk and tell us about the problem, and let's try and find...
Something I wanted to tell you, um, we have added dirt to our, we've had three, four tons of dirt.
Three truckloads.
Um, of dirt put in our yard because, you know, we talked about how we sit at the bottom of the, um, to try and help level that out. So that's been added since the neighborhood meeting we had.
Okay. Pam, have you, um, do you do anything with that, um...
In the back.
French drain yet?
Not yet. It wanted, when I spoke to the person, they wanted to add the dirt first and just see how much, and then make the next steps.
Yeah, I'm, I'm right there with you. I'm, I got my first load of dirt. Um, you know, it's like, I feel like it's just wishful thinking, but, you know, trying to...
Well, if we can determine what, what it looks like after the dirt, when it hasn't ever rained, and you know what, the next steps can be made, I think, at that point.
Yeah, and Pam, what they did at Caroline's house with that buildup on the curb, that should keep some of that coming over toward the back of your house, shouldn't it? Wasn't it coming across your yard into the...
Uh, yeah, yeah, some of it is, and some of it is, but...
Yeah, and then you've got, you've got it coming down the street from the left-hand side, uh, and, and, you know, she's at the lowest point, it's coming over the curb then.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay. Sure.
Russ, um, the ditches at our back of Chaplin Circle, that Butler Street, have those been done yet?
Sorry, those ditches at Butler and Chaplin Circle?
Yes.
Have they been cut out?
No, they have not yet. We're still waiting, uh, we're still waiting on the engineering guys to come and tell us what to do, because we don't want to do any work with them before, we might have reverse flow, you know, kind of wait for the study to come through. Probably won't do anything.
Um, anybody else?
Do they have a timetable on that road, or is it just not able to finish that?
Uh, it should be, I don't have the exact time off, I don't have my hand, I know it should be in six months, and we're getting close to the end of their time running.
Yeah, um, I, I mean, we've been living here in Washington for ten years, constantly, and, um, like everyone said, I prefer, and, um, and I was just thinking, you know, proposing maybe a sub pump in the meantime, and I know, you know, to put in the ditch, that when water rises, that it just automatically turn on the pump, maybe in some wooded area that's just the left side of us, there's nothing there.
Your, your house is the house that the garage works?
Yeah, I've got two, approximately two feet of water around my property.
He's on the ditch.
He's on the ditch, and water comes all the way around his side. Yeah, I mean, it's so unclean and it's unhealthy, it's unsanitary, so this is a mess.
Last week we proposed some, we was talking to other people down there, just, you know, is it a possibility, you know, of something better than that?
Yeah, I mean, to that, to that end, like, you know, we look at it on the map, and it's like, if you could pump it into the, you know, just put a slip bike under the road and pump it out to the wooded area that Butler had in the boat house, like, I know that's a lot of, like, getting, I don't know, but... It's the same idea we have with the, um, with the, the wooded lot that, um, Mike Backsley?
Yeah.
Yeah, like Mike Backsley's lot, like, where's the, where's the wooded space we can use temporarily to disperse?
Like a banister, right.
Yeah.
Until we get paid.
Okay, so...
Peaky back in on that a little bit, is because the, the one sitting in this room appreciate all the effort.
Sure.
And we are people that don't expect you to fully do the problem, fix the problem for us. We would love to, we would be fine putting a sub pump, sub pump, and these two ladies are prime example of effort.
Yeah.
You know, but, um, there's nowhere for it to go. We haven't, you know, if you talk to somebody about a sub pump, the first thing they say is, "Ma'am, we don't know where we're going to put it to."
Right, right.
Because unlike... Because unlike water just, um, piling up or filling up in locations that we've known through the years around town, we also see it, um, on the corner of, across from First Baptist. We know it floods there, but we see the water flowing. In our neighborhood, we don't see water flowing, we see water standing. We never, very seldom see water flowing. So we would be happy, and I think I'm correct, to say we don't mind doing some finances ourselves. We don't mind doing some dirty work ourselves, but we can't get people to do it because there's nowhere for them to put it.
Right, and so I think that's, that's our, our responsibility to help coordinate those efforts to find the places to put it. So, Mr. Manager, um, I think you've got the, the marching orders on that, and, um, I, I know Russ, you've been staying in contact with everybody and Bobby as well, so just continue to keep them apprised of the, of the efforts to move this forward. Thank you all for taking your time to come. Certainly, um, y'all have been here a while, so please, uh, don't stay if you don't, don't go to it. But thank you.
And Russ, could you also keep me posted, Russ? Could you also keep me posted as well on the, the, um, ditch on Sanoco and Chaplin and Butler?
Yeah.
And the nice big ditch, because that's like three hundred feet from my house.
Sure.
Fortunately, I have it during my yard, where when it rained the other day, you know, it was heightened because it was so much water.
All right, so we're gonna, uh, move the agenda forward. I have an item, Mr. Manager.
I just wanna thank all my staff for standing out in the hallway for a little bit, not a long time, but, um, I have an update, though, that we will set that in some time.
Yep.
We're already in the engagement.
And, and, um, you know, in the meantime, let's have a conversation with the parcel owners between that ditch and the lake, and maybe we can find a resolution that goes, you know, through the Culver property versus through Sanoco. Maybe there is an alternative that we can tap into.
Russ and I have been talking about some of the stuff, we're just trying to, it's, the issue is, of course, disposing of that volume of water coming into areas and you don't wanna create a marshal or anything.
No, I'm talking about straight to the lake.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, that's the goal, but it's not from the straight line.
No, yeah, yeah, no, I don't, that's an easy, me, me offering solutions is pretty easy because I'm not.
We were well aware of that, man.
Yeah, Russ, make that happen, right? Okay, um, so before, I didn't mean to, do you have anything further?
No, I, I'm fine, I'm fine.
All right, we also have, um, for public comment, we've had a letter, the clerk, in absence of the reading clerk, would, um, please publish the letter?
The letter was from Pamela Briggs.
Oh, no, not now, she was here, did the, the other.
We have a letter from Carolina Pines, Darren Ray Pennington, we're writing behalf of the leadership team, that's where we're going to.
Yes, ma'am.
And the medical staff at Carolina Pines Regional Medical Center regarding the requirement of masking in public places. We highly encourage the city of partial to adopted owners making an illegal requirement that face masking more in public places due to the continuing rapid spread of COVID-19 in our community. Recent statistics show that the number of COVID-19 cases and hospitalizations are increasing in San Francisco, including partial. With this new virus, there's still, um, unknown, however, the CDC recommends that practicing social distancing and wearing a face mask can help to slow the spread of the virus because cloth face coverage prevents the person wearing the mask from spraying respiratory droplets when talking, sneezing, or coughing. Studies show the risk of exposure can be reduced by sixty-five percent if everyone in the community is taking precautions and wearing masks. Our community and state have always risen to the challenges we face, and the medical community has great optimism and the resilience and strength of our citizens to do what is necessary to stop the spread of these terrible diseases. If no action is taken as far as ensuring that a lasting impact on our community, we ask all citizens to understand the seriousness of the law we are in and take personal responsibility and accountability to comply with this measure. And since sincerely the senior leaders at Carolina Pines and the medical deputy committee.
Okay. Um, we'll move then into the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda without objection will be received. Stand approved. Um, moving into unfinished business, item six on the agenda is public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-three, uh, ninety-eight. The manager will publish.
Ordinance forty-three ninety-nine is to lease a portion of a tax law number zero five six, zero six, zero two, zero eight seven, located at one fourteen South Fourth Street to Brandy Sullivan, VBA Station.
Okay, um, you've heard the reading by title and presentation of ordinance forty-three ninety-eight. This time the chair will move to open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance forty-three ninety-nine, if you'd rather, state your name and address from the record, please look at your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, the chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion, we pass ordinance forty-three ninety-nine.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay? Yeah, that's happened. Item seven on the agenda is public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-three ninety-nine, the manager will publish.
Ordinance forty-three ninety-nine is to lease the property at two W one North Carolina Avenue to the dogs in Camden and Pressburg.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title and presentation of ordinance forty-three ninety-nine. This time the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance forty-three ninety-nine, if you would rather, state your name and address from the record, please look at your comments in two minutes or less. Joe? Um, hearing done, the chair will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to adopt ordinance forty-three ninety-nine.
Sir, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Madam?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I just got a phone call, and I couldn't answer it that could pertain to that. So, um, if, if we pass it and they don't take it, what would be consequence?
Well, there's a, a lease, do you wanna go calling girlfriend?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think there would be, I'm gonna get around Amber, because I know there would be a call to there as well. Amber?
Like a thirty-day owl?
Yeah, sorry. And?
You'd be like a, if they, if they pass a year's trial.
Especially your only proven obligation for us to execute.
Oh, let's see, maybe they wanna rent for more on.
Yeah, I have a question for sixty days or thirty days. I think it's thirty or sixty, I know that they're busy with our town hall. But if they have a sign that, y'all have approved it.
Well, like you said, it's to, it's.
They're all going to authorize the building trust.
Correct, I think it's fine if they don't. We're not gonna do anything to them.
All right. Chief? I've heard it, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward, you ask me that. Okay, any further discussion? Yes, last.
I just, oh, good. They could not want to, if that means you were supposed to contact, if somebody's supposed to contact somebody, and that didn't happen, so.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion to table. Open it.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, pardon?
Could you, um, the vote is already still.
We'll have a motion on.
Motion is approved, so that has to be there, be approved, and that's still okay.
You can have a motion to table, what's the motion to?
You need to finish the motion to second. It is, you can amend it, but well, who made the first motion? I'm, I'm lobby, you make the motion, so.
I, can I make our initial, I'll, sorry. I would, I would still go ahead and pass for it because I don't want to have to have another reading to do it. If they somehow have signed it, then it would be, it would be okay. If they didn't move forward, that this was y'all agreeing to it. But if they didn't sign it, I just, I don't know how quickly they wanted to get in there. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
This only would allow for you, us to excuse the lease, they do not run out of leases by you agreeing to this.
Correct.
Okay, well, what I'm being told is that they do not, they don't want to want.
Okay, so, um, the chair is going to remember that there's a motion on the floor, uh, to adopt the public hearing forty-three ninety-nine. Um, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
The nays have.
Oh, no.
I just wanted Johnny to like be the, the Democrat that's killed the, the party members. Yeah.
I have a, I don't know if you can.
We're not, it's, it's. Okay, item nine on the agenda is per hearing of ordinance forty-four hundred. The manager will publish.
Ordinance forty-four hundred, ordinance to lease the property on the corner of Marlborough Avenue at Seven Street and the Lutzville Avenue.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title and presentation of ordinance forty-four hundred, chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
So we make the motion, yes. Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? First reading is passed. Item ten on the agenda is ordinance forty-four oh-one, the manager will publish.
Ordinance forty-four one is emergency ordinance to require face coverage in certain circumstances to reauthorize an authorization for lecture meetings and electronic meetings and other matters related to it.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title and presentation of the city manager, ordinance forty-four oh-one, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to pass ordinance forty-four oh-one.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? That's happened. Item eleven on the, on the, uh, agenda is executive session, a motion to enter executive session pursuant to South Monaco Freedom of Information Act, section thirty dash four dash seventy, paragraph eight, sub-paragraph one, for the discussion of the point for housing authority of Hartsfield and the Hartsfield Public Development Corporation, is there such a motion? Um, any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Ladies and gentlemen, standing in executive session, thank you for coming.